I would like to call to order the City of Cherryville's regular city council meeting of Monday, July 10th, 2023. I would like for everyone to please stand for our invocation by Pastor Dr. Vince Hefner of First Baptist Church, followed by our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of First Baptist Church, I want to thank you for the opportunity and the privilege. Thank you all for what you do for our city. We thank you for your leadership. Out of First Timothy, it says, "I urge you first of all to pray for all people. Ask God to help them intercede on their behalf and give thanks for them." Today, we want to give thanks for all that you guys do. We appreciate it. Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for our town, the people that serve us in our town. Lord, from every capacity, we thank you for their lives. We thank you for the love that they have for our town. Now again, Lord, we pray for these regular meetings. May you always guide us with your wisdom and discernment. Thank you for all that are here and for all the people that love this beautiful place. May your hand guide us and direct us. I ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. First item we have on our agenda to address is the approval of the agenda as presented. What is the council's pleasure on agenda approval?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, the same. There is none. Next item is approval of the minutes of A, our city council regular meeting of June the 12th, 2023, and B, our city council work session meeting of June the 27th, 2023. What is the pleasure of the council on approval of minutes?
Make a motion that we approve both sets at the same time. The city council regular meeting of June 12th, the city council work session of June 27th.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented of A, city council regular meeting of June 12th, 2023, and B, our city council work session meeting of June 27th, 2023. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There is none. Next item is mayor's comments. I would first like to, you probably noticed to the right where our media is, everybody knows Mike Powell from the Eagle, but tonight we have a special guest, Cara Fortner of the Gaston Gazette, who is with us also. The city's Independence Day celebration held on June the 30th at Brutusel Stadium was again a huge success this year. Many of those in attendance estimated the crowds to be in excess of 5,000. The Tams show band gave a great task of getting the fans involved with their performance. Thanks go out to Mr. Patrick O'Leary for sponsoring this spectacular fireworks display that ended the celebration. This past Friday, I, along with council members Malcolm Parker and John Abernathy, all traveled to the Gaston County Board of Elections to file for reelection in this coming November's election. The three of us are seeking to serve our city once again for the upcoming term of our respective offices. The new "Welcome to Cherryville" sign at the corner of Depot and Main Street is nearing completion. The sign looks great, and I urge all of our citizens to go by and visit this sign. And we want to thank Bean Brothers for the hard work that was put into building this gateway to our downtown area. The City of Cherryville recently was chosen by World Atlas as having one of the great-looking main streets in the U.S. World Atlas stated that our Main Street is one of the best main streets you will find in any town throughout the entire sound. The historic downtown contains many buildings that were constructed in the early 1900s and even earlier. Cherryville, it stated, is an ideal place for community events such as festivals, parades, farmers markets, and more that bring people together in a cozy, small-town atmosphere. We owe this recognition to the tireless work of all the members and volunteers of our Main Street program. On Wednesday of this week, I will be attending this year's Main Street kickoff celebration. This event will begin at 6:00 p.m. here in the community building. This year's theme is Main Street, USA, and the featured guest speaker will be Main Street Director Jamie Carpenter of Hendersonville, North Carolina. This concludes the mayor's comments. We will now go to item seven, which is our special recognition of employees' years of service. And at this time, I would ask, is Vince Furlison here? Please come forward. Do you have any family members with you? Just you, just me. Okay. All right. I think the lead wants to get a picture here. Certificate. This certificate is awarded to Vince Furlison in recognition of five years of service to the City of Cherryville, and it is signed by Brian Dalton, City Manager, and H.L. Dean, Mayor. Congratulations, Vince. The next thing will be awards from the Department of Labor, and the first one that I have to give out, I would ask our police chief, if he would please come forward. And this is, see, they're dressed up for the occasion. This is from North Carolina Department of Labor, Certificate of Safety Achievement, second consecutive year of gold, in recognition of the outstanding safety and health efforts of the City of Cherryville's Police Department that resulted in a substantial reduction of injuries and illnesses and the promotion of safer working conditions in 2022, signed by our Commissioner of Labor, Josh Dotson. Congratulations, chief. All right. And we have one more from the North Carolina Department of Labor. Is Chris King here?
He's on vacation if we haven't seen him.
Kevin Abernathy's here. Kevin, if you'll come forward. This is also from North Carolina Department of Labor, Certificate of Safety Achievement for the second consecutive year of gold, in recognition of outstanding safety and health efforts of the City of Cherryville's Public Utilities Department that resulted in a substantial reduction of injuries and illnesses and the promotion of safer working conditions in the year 2022, signed by Commissioner of Labor, Josh Dotson.
I will clarify one thing before we move on. The mayor and Malcolm and I did not write together to file for elections. That would be illegal and constitute to be, we did not write together.
The next item to be addressed is citizens to be heard, and if any citizen that would like to speak, they do so by coming to the podium, stating your name and address before you speak. Comments will be strictly held to five minutes per person. And I had asked people to sign up if they were wishing to speak, and the first one I have on the list is Mike Dellinger. So, Mike, you have the podium at this time. Please state your name and address.
Who's he, Dellinger? 101 Meredith. I was waiting on my award for raising the motel, not a topic. But it is what it is. You know, naturally, things aren't going the way I feel like, and, you know, individually, I'm good with everybody here. I don't know about when you get a certain group together, but I just hope things go the way they are, and I, you know, I don't think any amount of money is worth giving up or history. I don't think any amount of money is worth having a dirt arsenic pond of, you know, a mile down the road. But, and I'm gonna go ahead and say what I wanted to say about half. But when I come up here and I'm spilling my heart about how I feel about these issues, you know, and then I just don't, I feel like everything is a preset on a cue. And, you know, in other words, I just, I think this is a waste of time, being standing up here and making myself look like an idiot trying to convey how, in my opinion, how the citizens feel. And, you know, I mean, whether it's a poll on Facebook or whatever, I mean, I've got my hand on the pulse of this town, and I know what's going on. And, you know, I just, like I said, I'm disappointed. All I can definitely do is wish O'Leary luck with this museum deal, and, you know, this other deal down here, this lithium thing, I just don't know. I'd have probably been on record, you know, minus a million, or 11 million, or six, or whatever, as against it, but, you know, just how I feel. I also want to say hey, Palmer over there, I always gotta get him here on this. But anyway, and welcome to our guest tonight, by the way. But, you know, I appreciate y'all listening and stuff like that, but, you know, it's like that lithium deal when it came up and everybody was talking, and y'all had a pre-written statement, and it just makes you feel like, why did I even waste my time? And so it is what it is, and we'll do it again. You know that.
Thank you, Mike. The only comment I would have from that is, it may seem a lot of times that decisions are made ahead of time, and actually, they are made ahead of time. That's what we call a work session. And when we meet at the work session, we discuss things that will be coming up at our regular council meeting, and yes, we did prepare a statement because the consensus was that how we were gonna vote that night, but...
Yeah, but it, you know, again, I just, you know, what is, what is, what is money?
I mean, that gets everywhere, they make it every day, and your history and your environmental situations and all, I'm just looking at stuff logically, you know? I mean, I know there's debt here of the town and this and that and all, but, you know, I was passionate about this deal, and I still don't feel like we're going the right way, but it is what it is, and I gotta get some damn sleep. I mean, that's just for a second. Thank you.
Only thing I do when I focus, remember that lithium decision, it was not to approve or disapprove the project at all.
I mean, I've read, I know, trust me, I...
There's still a lot more to do. That's not, that ain't nothing to do with the project yet, what are you doing?
My middle name is Dilligus. Thank you.
And also, I will speak for the whole council. We have no intentions of doing away with the history of Cherryville. That has never been the intent up here at all. We're always gonna have a history of our, of our city, and that will always remain. May not be the same building. It could be the same building. We don't know. That's, that's to be determined, but we have no intentions of closing the museum. The museum voted in favor of having nothing whatsoever to do with the City of Cherryville. So all we're doing is following their orders. They didn't want us to do anything, and now, all of a sudden, they want us to do something. So, our next person to speak is Al Putnam.
But, and again, I did say that I could have met with the board, I just never could get, I never could get anything in writing, or, you know, I could never get anybody together was the deal. Okay, thanks.
Hey, y'all, that is a lie. You're telling the people in Cherryville that the museum decided that they weren't going to have anything to do with the city? That's a lie! And you've spread that lie many a times, and we're not gonna put up with it.
I got a question for you, Al.
No, I, no, this is my time.
Do you live in Cherryville? Your car has an Oklahoma tag on it.
This is my, this is my time.
Sit down.
This is my time. And things that you want to question about it, you can certainly do that at the appropriate time, but this is for public comment, that doesn't even, doesn't even allow you to speak back to the audience.
You have to...
You are closed-minded, you are closed business, and you are not transparent, and you, as you admitted just a few minutes ago, that you made decisions outside of the, outside of the meetings.
No, I did not say outside the meetings. I did not. I said it work session, and that is a meeting. If you're not aware of that, we have work sessions every month.
You didn't discuss, you didn't discuss anything to do with the lithium before the, before that last, before you voted on it for $11 million to take. No way. You sit there with the city and, and you think that you have, that you think you're open and honest with everyone? You're closed door, you're closed ears, you don't talk about what you're gonna talk about. You just vote. There's a lot more to that than, than all of that. You don't hear recommendations about any of the items rarely from the city count, from the city staff. You just go and do what you wanna do. It's time, it's gonna stop. And I guess your buddy Pat talked to you today, didn't he?
Please address the microphone.
She's, uh...
Not individuals.
So, so anyway, you all know that there's a lawsuit filed for adverse possession or adverse possession of claim for real property. So the property now has been encumbered, there's a mechanic's lien on the property, there's other things with that, and you can't sell the building because it doesn't belong to you. It doesn't belong to you. It belongs to citizens of Cherryville, and Mr. Palmer Huffsteller, Sr., wrote that in a letter that he did to the, to the board, addressing it to Joe Bill Putnam. So, it's the idea that we've been, we've actually, you can call it whatever you want to, squatters' rights or whatever, adverse possession. We possess that building for four months shy of, four months shy of, and met all the other requirements of double the amount of time that state statute allows, it requires.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Who has filed a lawsuit?
The Cherryville Historical Association has filed a lawsuit.
Did who sign the, who signed the lawsuit?
The Cherryville Historic Association.
Who?
It's the board. The board made the decision.
And you're the chairman?
No, I'm the president.
You're the president, so you, you did sign it, didn't you?
The Cherryville Historic Association filed the lawsuit.
But you had to have individuals sign the lawsuit, right? And was your name on the lawsuit?
My, my name is on an affidavit.
If you're part of that lawsuit, then this castle is permitted to even talk to you.
He can't even talk to you.
So, I feel like this conversation is over, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, let's, yeah. How are you in control of things?
Your time is up, sir. Please have...
Is it?
Chief?
Paige didn't say it was, so he's not.
You're trying to...
But you...
Also, your time, we don't talk to you, we'll talk to your lawyer.
You don't have to talk to you anymore. It's pro se, so it's gonna go.
Al, have seat. Your time's up.
Paige didn't say it's time's up.
Al.
What's your also, can you speak to you or speak to your lawyer?
We do have one other individual that has signed up to speak tonight. Rusty Wise, do you have anything you would like to add to this?
Maybe not all that. Yeah, Rusty Wise, former Johnson Drive. You know, I was one of the bidders, you know, for the museum, and the first bidding process was a fiasco, and I know y'all don't like that word, but the first process was definitely a fiasco, and there's three or four things wrong with it, and I still do not have an answer why you scrapped the first process. No answer was ever given to me or anybody, no statement. You just, you know, scrapped all the bids.
Would you like to answer that?
Yeah, if you've got it.
We did vote to accept...
We were contacted by your lawyer saying that we were gonna be sued if we did not take your bid. We felt like we had another bid of $300,000. We were never threatened to be sued by that person, but he thought his bid was valid, he thought yours was valid. The best thing for the city to do after being directed the lawsuit was to scrap the process and start all over. So you are the reason we did not take any of those bids and start moving.
Not necessarily. There's no lawsuit. That was the only valid bid on the table at the time.
In your opinion?
In Raleigh lawyer's opinion.
Not still with that many opinions.
But the $300,000...
Statute said...
Why didn't you take the $300,000?
Because you threatened to sue us if we didn't take yours.
We shut down all bids at that time. All bids.
The $300,000, I mean, had you accepted that, then that would've been a really bad situation for the city.
That's why we shut it down.
And so the, but the legal bid was 263, as far as the lawyers in Raleigh. So, I mean, we can, you scrapped it, I mean, you used the last clause, which you can do that, that's fine, and, and so we didn't bid again, but I think, I think the decisions you're making is based totally off money. The lithium deal's money, the museum's money, there's no other reason why you would sell the museum other than get money. I know you want to get rid of the board, that's one of the reasons, I understand that. And, you know, you're, you're cluster home neighborhoods, that's about money too. So I think, you know, most of the decisions are made totally about money. I just hope, and I hope Mr. O'Leary or Cherryville Main Street LLC at least keeps the museum where it is, and you guys, it's, he's a billionaire, that's a thousand millionaires. Billionaire is a lot of zeros, and if he's got that kind of money, I challenge Mr. O'Leary to keep the museum where it is, make ADA access, we'll put an elevator in for all the citizens to show. That's the best thing that I can do, in my opinion. So that's all I'd say.
Thank you, Mr. Wise. Anyone else under citizens to be heard that would like to speak at this time? Okay, if not, we'll go on with the agenda. We'll go to item 10. This is consideration of a public hearing in reference to a zoning text amendment to zoning ordinance, Part 5, Section 5.2.3, parentheses B. We do have our planning and zoning, Elliot Blackburn, to help us with this, but I would entertain a motion to enter a public hearing at this time.
Motion to enter a public hearing.
Have a motion and a second to enter a public hearing at this time. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, there is none. We are now considered in public hearing.
So recently, we were in talks with a developer for a commercial property, and we were going over to acquire a buffer yards, and he said, "I'll do it, I'm probably doing whatever y'all want, but I do have a question, why is it that I can only make a wooden fence?" I can do that, but I really don't want to put a wooden fence up because I'm gonna have to repair it every five years. Because they make vinyl, they make other forms of fencing, and I'd be a good buffer for my business, so neighbors don't see my business, and I don't see neighbors. At that point, Senator Brian Dalton and I got together, that is a good point, and with the materials you can make a fence out of these days, we're really limited in both our aesthetics around the city as well as whatever developer can do. So we decided to add vinyl or masonry or any combination of the above, with the exception that we will exclude it. Chain link, instance, shall be excluded as a buffer, kind of defeats the purpose of a buffer, and see if you can see through it. So I think if this was brought before and the planning board get passed unanimously to the planning board for recommendation for a hurdle by USC Johnson, replace ads on the notices as well as ads in material newspaper for two percent of weeks, so we made a reply.
Okay. Do I have any citizen that would like to speak in public hearing at this time? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion from council to exit public hearing at this time.
Motion to enter a public hearing.
Have a motion and two seconds to exit public hearing at this time. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, there is none. Okay, at this time, we'll now have discussion by council. I think planning and zoning director Elliot Blackburn has pretty well told us exactly what it is. If you look on page 33, you'll see where it's with vinyl or masonry or any combination of the above, and finally, this shall exclude the use of chain length fences from being considered buffer material. Any discussion from any council member at this time? Not. Do I have a motion to accept the text amendment as presented?
Sorry. Mary.
Okay. Yes. The City of Cherryville requirement of Section 19.1.10 of the City of Cherryville zoning ordinance, we have helped the public hearing tonight and consider the zoning text amendment, and after the public hearing, we draw the conclusion of, one, it is the council's conclusion that the proposed amendment is or is not consistent with the City of Cherry, Cherryville land use plan and reasonable with the spirit of the ordinance.
Is.
Two, the council finds the proposed amendment is or is not reasonable and is or is not in the public entrance, interest. This conclusion is based on the following.
Is. Is.
Okay, and that is ordered this 10th day of July, 2023. Now do I have the motion to approve as presented?
Aye. Sir.
Have a motion and a second to accept the text amendment as presented. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, there is none. Thank you, Ellen. Okay. Item 11 now is consideration of upset bid process in regards to city property located at 109 East Main Street. We are now considering the bid of $400,000 from Mr. Patrick O'Leary, or it's actually Cherryville LLC. it's actually Cherryville LA LLC, Main Street LLC.
Mayor and Council, I need to disagree with that. It's kind of transpired, May the thirty-first, the City of Cherryville did receive an offer of four hundred thousand dollars for the historical museum from Cherryville Main Street LLC. Uh, that was brought before you at the June twelfth council meeting. At that time, it was unanimously voted to start the upset bid process. The advertisement was ran with Cherryville Eagle on June the twenty-first, and it ran all the way till July the third, where anybody could put in a bid. We did receive, as I said earlier, the four hundred thousand from Cherryville Main Street LLC with the twenty thousand dollar deposit made the thirty-first, and nobody else put in any bids as of the last day, which was June, July the third, at five o'clock noon.
I do have a question, since we are discussing this, uh, from our city attorney. Can we bring this before a, a vote to accept the bid or decline it if we have a lawsuit pending? Okay, to have any discussion from any council member?
The only thing I got to say about it is, this is not the first time this building has ever been so.
My great uncle and aunt, they made that building through the city. And the fourth, the tenth, and we, uh, didn't know it yet, so actually tried working with the board, if they changed the outlaws to give the city more input. And a few have let it down. We've seen what Mr. O'Leary has done. Other buildings he's bought, the city chairman, he's one of the only ones right now that are making buildings better, renovating it, putting new roofs on it, renting them to businesses that are good for this town. He saw what he did with the YMCA, he took that building, completely renovated it, rented it to the Y, and then his foundation has given up a donation every month to pay it in. Now he's also renovating other two parks to, to back to, uh, to make it better. Somebody's got a problem with one person owning that much property, but he's the one in this town who's doing something to improve the town. And I think that's a good thing. You know, if, if we could work with the board, got more input as a city, you know, we own the building, but we had to say something. I mean, anything, the way we're doing it. So know a way that we can really get out of this situation, it's the stuff of Mr. O'Leary. You know him? I'm not sure what he's going to do, but I, I've heard he's going to offer to rent back to the museum, but with historical association and conditions. And I think he's a fair man, and he'll, he'll, uh, got to work it out, with his historical association. Would you like to make a motion? Yes. I'd like to make a motion, go ahead and accept his bid, and sell the building to Mr. O'Leary.
My is to also second that motion. And it's home of the council of the works, like he stated, that we've seen done. Mr. O'Leary does preserve everything that he finds that's historical about our buildings. My grandfather laid the brick in a lot of these buildings downtown, he was a brick mason. And there's a lot of historical and value in every building that's out there, in the architecture of it. And the one thing I'm seeing, because the building has been deteriorating over the years, because and nothing going on in it, uh, never opened but a few hours on Saturday, and for the longest, for the last ten years that I've been on this board, there has been absolutely nothing really going on, and it's only open when we have an event. And Pat, bless her heart, Pat Sherrill has tried her best to get volunteers. A lot of the older ladies in this town, my mother was one that'd go in and try to help them too, and they tried to sell things, but for the last ten years, there has been no interest in that building. And it could be a beautiful building, I've seen the pictures of it before, all of that brown stuff that was put on the front of it. It is a beautiful piece of architecture, but it's covered up. But I think Mr. O'Leary has done a great job in trying to enhance our building and buildings, and he cares about our heritage. Not just a few people in this town, he also cares about the heritage of this town. And so, my vote is to second that motion.
May I have a motion in a second to accept the bid of four hundred thousand from Main Street LLC, also known as Mr. Patrick O'Leary? Any other discussion by council at this time? If not, all in favor of this motion, please say aye. All opposed, the same, there is none. Okay, the only comment I would have is, um, I resent the fact that someone suggests that there's not transparency in this council, that is an absolute lie. I ran the first time when I ran for mayor, mine was TLC, Transparency, Leadership, and Commitment. I'm seventy-eight years old, I have lived in this town for every year except the time that I was in college, and you know what? I've been mayor for ten years, and I have never, ever made a decision by this council or with this council, except for things that are positive for our city. We have made some bold decisions, I know we have. When we decided to put new infrastructure in downtown, new water lines, new signs are going up, uh, welcome to Cherryville. Uh, the parks are being renovated. Everything we have done is tried to help this town move forward in a positive direction, not a negative direction. So for someone to say there's not transparency, I resent that statement. I've been here ten years, and I hope to be here for two more years, and, uh, I will tell you right now that this council, I enjoy working with these four people because they're not afraid to make a bold decision. That's all I have to say. We'll now move to item thirteen, other business, at this time, uh, oh, I'm sorry, I did that, oh, there, I got upset. Item twelve is consideration of our budget ordinance in reference to uh, our AIA grant of three hundred thousand dollars for water and sewer study. Uh, our city manager, Brian Dalton, will lead us through this budget ordinance.
Yes, Mayor and Council, as you're aware, we received a three hundred thousand dollar grant to do a study on our water system and our wastewater system. A hundred fifty thousand dollars for each, and if you look there on page thirty-four, you can see it broken down for, for each incident, and how much, how much we're going to spend uh, to smoke test the lines, uh, inspections, uh, project management, manhole inspections on the wastewater side. And on the water side, you can see there that it's going to be some line locations, some potholing, hydraulic, hydraulic model of water system. And basically, we're going to find out where, where our biggest needs are, and what do we need to focus on the most. And this project here is going to lead us to where we're going to get the answers that we need to hopefully go after some larger grants in the near future, where we can try to fix the problems that we find when this, this project is completed, so. This is just a capital budget ordinance for both the water and the wastewater that we need to get adopted. Uh, and this is just where, when we get the, the funds in from the state, we bring them in, they're in their own line item, and then we spend the funds as they're allocated here in the budget ordinance on both incidents.
Uh, does any council members have any questions for city manager Dalton on this issue? Can you explain a little bit, what is smoke testing? Is that when they push smoke into the water lines and the sewer lines, or?
You're going to see, you're going to see smoke coming up out of the, out of the sewer system, so, uh, when we talked about that uh, with Nicole, I think some of y'all may be met Nicole, uh, that's going to run this project. Russell Wright is also helping, Jerry Twigs is another member of her team. But this is going to be something that we will have to have communication with our citizens to say, hey, we're going to be doing smoke testing, you know, maybe on Wigglesel Street, and that way the citizens know what's going on, and they're not all calling saying, hey, what's happening down here, you know, I see smoke coming up out of, out of the sewer lines everywhere. But, uh, so we will have something similar to what we had, uh, when Main Street was going on, we'll have communication to let citizens know what areas we're going to be, uh, smoke testing on certain days. And the project mostly focuses on, if you just take the railroad tracks, the south side of the railroad tracks, it's mostly what the project focuses on. And that's our oldest areas of town, you know, if you look at, uh, the Carlton Mill area, you know, those sewer lines were put in by the, by the mill back in the day, those were not even put in by the city this year. So we're, we're looking to find out exactly what we need to go forward with trying to fix a lot of these issues.
Is this going to also identify why we're getting so much groundwater in our system?
That's a, that's a big thing, is to determine why we get, why we're treating so much groundwater.
This is just one part of larger grants that will be going after.
Yeah, this is, uh, you know, when I, when I talked to Nicole about this, and we laid it out, when we get the information from these two studies, that's when we can check that box on, hey, we've had an AIA study completed, and this is the result, and this is what we need to do to fix these problems. Because this infrastructure has been, has been, you know, we all know, Main Street, for example, we know how bad Main Street infrastructure was, and how it was preventing us from growing. This is another example, we, we're going to get a lot of answers, and, you know, it's, it's kind of the, the more problems they find, probably the more funds we're going to be able to qualify and go for, you know, in a grant to fix those problems. But, uh, you know, we know there's going to be issues found, and then we'll go after more money to hopefully fix the problems that we, we find in these two studies.
Any questions from any council member? If not, do I have direction of a motion to approve slash accept the budget ordinance as presented?
Have a motion to approve?
Have a motion to approve and or accept the budget ordinance as presented. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed, the same, there is none. Now we can move to item thirteen, uh, other business, and I think our city manager wants to give us an update on some of the things going on in our city at this time.
Yes, Mayor and Council, uh, first thing is, uh, you also have a photo that I sent you from West Gate Park. You know, we've, we've had the two new basketball put up, goals put up, and today he was putting down the resurfacing and, you know, making our court, you know, pretty, it's, it's a pretty royal blue color today, and tomorrow he's gonna, uh, Paige looked at it when I said that, because she likes that view. But tomorrow she'll put down, he'll put down the, the lines, free throw lines and all that, and we'll get all that completed, and then the basketball court will be done. Mike Steele is scheduled to go to Johnson Drive next week and finish patching that, and then he's going to go pour the asphalt for the pickleball courts that we're going to build at West Gate Park. Now that asphalt will have to stay down for about thirty days before we can resurface it, according to Mr. Soes, who I'm talking to. So it'll, it'll have to be down for thirty days, then he'll come back in, finish the pickleball courts, and then hopefully we can get Mike back out there to finish the paving around the park, and we'll be pretty much completely there. From there, we've already, uh, scheduled, we've already scheduled Mr. Soes to go to Edwards Park next. We're going to resurface that entire court, and I believe I've shown the mayor a picture of what we picked out. You know, we're going to try to stick with John Chavis Middle School colors, do the royal blue with the, with the orange lane to make it, you know, match the, uh, John Chavis Middle School. Uh, I actually sent an email today to the company that we've been purchasing the basketball goals from, to try to order six goals at one time, so four of those goals will go up at Edwards Park. If you go down there, you can see that they got, they have two full courts down there, so we're going to try to four new goals, resurface that court. Uh, from there, we'll, we'll go to Rotary Park, you know, Rotary Park just has the small, small, uh, basketball court. We're probably going to at least resurface that. That's probably our best playground equipment, I would say, is Rotary Park. The goal at Rotary Park is in pretty good shape, so I don't know if we'll change that one out for sure, but Ram Bar Park, over behind Small Town Kitchen, that park, if you've been over there lately, the tennis court has been non-existent for a long time. So we're going to try to see about converting that tennis court into two outdoor pickleball courts as well over there, and obviously resurface that, uh, court and, uh, get a new basketball goal there. The other park, Aaron Moss Park, uh, there's a lot of things that's probably going to be going on at that park. I did get word that there is a good possibility that Gasson County is going to go to basically play in middle school baseball on a regulation sixty-foot mound, ninety-foot bases. So what we would do is we would move the middle school baseball team up to the senior little field. So if that happens, we're going to try to go in there, and obviously we're going to have to do some work on that field and get that field in better shape for the middle school baseball season. And hopefully, we're going to get a confirmation in the next few weeks, because I'm, I don't want to wait until February and tell Nicole, you know, we're going to move sixty-nine, so I'm hoping that's going to come in pretty quick. If you ever go to Aaron Moss Park, Aaron Moss Park probably has the most people play basketball of any court we have. One of the goals is completely broken right now, so we're looking at ordering two new basketball goals there, we're going to resurface that, uh, basketball court as well. And the other big project that we have all been talking about, and I'm hoping is going to come to reality very soon, is is a gymnasium being built there at, uh, Aaron Moss Park, you know. We had originally talked about the, the grass parking lot area there, as you turn into the parking lot there at the, you know, City Park softball field, but that, that area is not big enough to fit the gym. And like I said, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel, we've been to Stanley, and we've looked at the gym that they have. Uh, I've got their plans, I've got their contractors, I've already got prices on the material, the concrete, uh, an individual erecting the building, uh, I've sent it to, try to get some prices on plumbing, so we'll know where we're at. I'm going to try to get some prices on the electrical. Doug Decen with the city of Stanley has, uh, been real helpful in trying to walk us through the process as far as how they got their gym built. I've sent all of you pictures, and I know you've seen them. I know Mr. Parker went and looked at it. And I encourage any of you, if you have time, to let me know, and we can schedule a time that I can take you down there and let you look at the gym. It's a, it's a beautiful facility, uh, and I think it's something that we desperately need in the town. It would go a long way for, for helping our youth programs, you know, have a place to, to practice, especially in basketball, but there's a lot of other things we can also do, other than basketball. You know, I, I would hope we can have volleyball, maybe even some wrestling tournaments, who knows? I mean, we could do a lot of things with this, with this gym. Uh, it would have a small concession stand, you know, bathrooms, of course, and office. And if we do get the gym built, I feel like we are going to have to move forward with a full-time recreation effort at that point. We're going to, we're going to have, uh, we're going to have somebody that's got to manage and oversee a lot of that.
That, that gym, we're probably looking for a bit and a half.
That's, that's kind of, that's kind of the goal, is, is stay, stay there or rather, and I believe we can do it. It, it's, it's a beautiful gym, if you look at this. Something everybody should be proud of, if we can get that, you know, we're working with Gasson County on it, Commissioner Frayle's been working real hard to help us out on it, and I hope that we're going to have some good news very soon.
Is there a possibility we could get one-on-one with you and Dr. White, uh, playing a game of basketball on that court? Because I know he's a pretty good ball player, basketball.
I'll bet you one of us will play.
Without an audience, I'll meet you there.
Absolutely. But, uh, hopefully that's going to be coming up very soon, but the parks, uh, I've already talked to, like I said, Mr. Soes, he's finishing up West Gate mound, he's going to move to Edwards Park, and we're going to keep him moving hopefully to the other parks. And we're going to keep him moving hopefully to the other parks. He does have a lot of projects in other places, but he is doing a good job in trying to help us get these courts figured out.
That's going to make a lot of kids that want to go to youth in this town really happy because that is one reason they ask for a major gym.
Gym is very important.
And it's quality purpose. You could have venues in there, concerts, cheerleading, practice, a lot of different things that would fit there.
Another thing that I really have on my, on my mind and planning is working with, you know, Dr. White and I was actually talking a little bit about it earlier, is working to try to bring back our little league program a lot better. And a lot of that comes from, you know, I think we got to get our facilities back to where they need to be. And I would also, I've already started talking to some contractors about the potential of building like an in, I wouldn't say indoor, but a batting cage that has a roof over it, you know, has power. Things like, if you bend the, you know, Shelby and look at their field over there, you know, they have the batting cage down there on the right field line where they have the roof and, you know, you can go in there and flick the lights on and hit it at night, whatever it might be. So I've talked to some contractors about potentially going out. Probably put something like that down at the little league up on the hill where we got plenty of room and something that people can be proud of and go hit.
So we have a lot of irons in the fires.
There is a ton of projects, a lot of this kind of, that sort of thing.
Anything else from staff under other business? Anything from council? Councilman Freeman?
Saturday on Main Street about the upkeep of the beds, the new plants that are not being maintained. Got some dead plants. We got weeds and grass coming into it.
I don't know about dead plants for sure, but we did have some weeds if you looked at, from Pink to Depot. Now, a lot of our people, if you know, one of our employees just recently retired because of a injury that was assigned to Main Street. A lot of our employees was busy getting up debris and doing other things. But they did go up last week and they cleaned up all the flower beds. So if you ride by the night, you'll see that the weeds are gone. From Pink to Depot, there was some weeds growing in those flower beds. I do believe that it's time that we look at re-mulching the beds as well. Again, there's some fresh mulch.
I'm volunteering here.
Me too. Yeah, we had two, two of our guys, Brett Noodles was up there last Thursday or Friday and they done a good job of cleaning up.
Yeah, they did.
Forty-one hours.
That's right. I mean, if you want to get back to your town, get out there and get your hands in the dirt.
Anything else from council? Staff? Not? Do I have a motion for adjournment? I have a motion in second for adjournment. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, the same, there is none. Adjourn.